Good evening, everyone. It is Tuesday, September 13th, 2022. And in addition to our regularly scheduled work session of the Athens-Clark County Mayor Commission, we will have a special called session this evening for the purpose of entering into executive session for discussion of real estate acquisition and/or disposal. And so that, for that purpose, I do need a roll call from the clerk, so I'm going to ask her to do that at this point.
Madam Clerk?
Here.
Here.
Present.
Here.
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 All right. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Do I hear a motion to enter into executive session following the work session?
Second.
All right. I've got a motion from Commissioner Wright and a second from Commissioner Myers. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Madam Clerk, is it appropriate to have the motion for adjournment upon conclusion at this point?
I approve this meeting and the real estate acquisition.
Okay. All right. So we'll wait to do that. All right. So that said, we, of course, have our regularly scheduled work session tonight, and we have three items on the agenda today, being Tuesday. And then, of course, we are also going to be gathering Thursday because we have three items then as well. And so we're going to discuss the Eastside Library eagerly anticipated, our partnership with the Food Bank of Northeast Georgia regarding their expansion project, and then, very significantly, our planning department work plan and the comprehensive plan process. So I'm going to turn it over to Manager Williams to introduce our first item.
I think you covered it, Mayor. Thank you. Just a couple of updates. So the Eastside Public Library, John Simino is going to walk us through where we are in that. And you've got an upcoming concept approval and site selection criteria to consider, and this will inform that. The Food Bank of Northeast Georgia, we have representatives from the Food Bank to give you an update on where we are with that project. And then, I wanted to say as well, the Planning Department work plan, comp plan process, as you know, in the past, the commission has approved a work plan because there's always a number of topics or issues that the elected officials want to address when it comes to planning and zoning, not very intuitive to folks outside the process, but very important. And we've gotten to a point here where we're, staff's being asked to do things that are beyond the number of folks that we have, and we don't want to leapfrog other priorities you've previously named unless we have that conversation with you. That's part of this. The other part that's important for the public to know is that we're about to kick off our once every 10 years comprehensive planning process. Well, it's really, I guess, an update after five years. But what's really important about that is the future land use map. We want to get into that because a lot of the issues that y'all are struggling with now, you hear people talking about, emanate from past decisions around land use. So that's a very important discussion we're anxious to have and get your feedback on. So three great topics tonight. And as Mayor mentioned, we've had to open Thursday up because there are other meaty things to discuss on Thursday as well. So with that, John, we'll turn it over to you to get us on the Eastside Library.
All right. Thank you, Manager. My name's John Simino. I'm with the SPOS administration team, and I'll present for the Eastside Library project the project concept and site selection criteria. So first off, for the agenda and purpose, the purpose, as I just said, was, is to present, introduce you guys to the project concept and site selection criteria for the Eastside Library before going out to public engagement. And the agenda for this meeting will be to run through the quick history, then the budget, give you an update there, run through the project concept and site selection criteria, and then summarize it all, give you next steps, and then we'll go to question and answer. So I threw the SPOS project statement in here just for your reference. I'm not going to read through it right now, but just wanted you to have it in front of you in case you needed to reference it. I also threw a good bit of history into this presentation. I'm not going to walk through all of it right now, but just wanted to give you a sense of when the project was first proposed, what the initial proposed budget was, who all is on the user group. And then recently, so McMillan-Patterson Smith was selected as a design professional for the project. And then during May through August of 2022, they've worked to develop, worked with the user group and site selection committee to develop the project concept and site criteria. They've also done some initial programming sessions with library staff that will be continued throughout public engagement. And then you'll see on August 8th and August 18th, the user group and site selection signed off on both of these to come before you today. So next up, just wanted to give you guys an update on the project budget, where we currently stand based on the funds we have available, and how that ties into construction costs today, and kind of where that lands us as far as square footage goes. So you'll see our current budget up there on the screen now. We have $14 million available through the SPOS funding. And then we also, the Athens Library Board applied for a state grant and got $2 million there. And so that brings us to a total funding of $16 million and a little bit of change there. And then you'll see below kind of a further breakdown of the different buckets that that budget is broken down into. At the bottom, you'll see the total available for new construction is 7.5 million. So that's the budget number that we have to work off of for construction and all the background numbers that go into that as well. Also, wanted to give you guys an update on the construction budget, where we're seeing price per square foot right now, and where we think that'll land us as far as the facility that we can build as far as square footage goes. So the current construction budget, as I just mentioned, is 7.5 million. And then we asked McMillan-Patterson Smith to give us an update of where they're seeing construction costs now, where they expect them to be in 2024 when we go to build this library. And based on their experience, and they have a cost estimator on their team as well, the current budget was around $440 per square foot. Once you escalate that up to 2024, when we're trying to build this library, it gets up to $475 a square foot. And so if you take that 7.5 million and divide it by 475, that gets you to around 16,000 square foot that we believe we can build at this time with the current budget that we have. And so the original SPOS proposal, back when it was originally made in 2019, was for a 25,000 to 30,000 square foot library. And just wanted to give you a frame of reference for if we were to build that full facility. So you take that 25,000 square feet and multiply it by 475, it gets you to around 12 million and a total project budget of 22 million. So there's a, obviously, a gap there between what we had originally anticipated and what we have today. But we proceeded with developing the project concept and site selection criteria with that in mind and thought about opportunities for expansion. And that was all taken into consideration when we developed these two documents. So just an introduction to the project concept and site criteria. The project concept really forms the basis of design for the new Eastside Library. So it'll, the design team will use it as they work through the design process to use it as the basis of design. And that has been recommended by the user group and developed in conjunction with them and the design team. And then the site selection criteria will be the criteria that the site is weighed against. So there'll be different potential sites that come to the front, and we'll weigh them against the criteria that we've developed with the site selection, site selection committee and the user group. So I'm going to run through these documents. Obviously, it's a lot of text, so sorry about that. I'm not going to read through it all. I'll just give you a summary of what the different discussions were with the user group and important characteristics that are included here. So those first two bullet points, a library that can accommodate up to $200,000, $200,000 visitors annually, and a library that can house up to 50,000 books in its collection. That just gives us a general idea of the size of the library that we're talking about and the kind of collection that we're looking to include in that library. That's based off of the Watkinsville Library in O'Conne County that gave us the general numbers there. That was from the direction of the Athens Regional Library. And then a couple of different spaces are built into these must-have criteria, which define the minimum standard that we're designing to. So these are criteria that must be included within the building as we design it. So the design team will use these to build all these different aspects into the building. And a couple of different brooms are built into this, a large meeting room with a divider down the middle for library events, as well as access to the public after hours for community events and different events that will require that large meeting room. Collaborative spaces is another important room that was included in this, with the ability to have smaller study rooms as well as bigger study rooms for people to come in and use those to study or for virtual interviews. Three major areas, the children's area, the youth area, and the adult, all with their own circulation desks to make sure that patrons have the help that they need. And then the different sustainability requirements are built into this as well. So the minimum requirement would be that it either be LEED certified or a similar certification, other than that, based on the Athens-Clark County sustainability guidelines. And so that has been set as a minimum standard. And one other thing I'll note is just storage is included in this because that's, in talking to library staff and the user group, something that's very important in operating a library. You need storage for different materials, for events that you're doing, and book carts. And so that's built into the must haves as well. And then highly wanted and nice to have, these both will be things that we strive for as we hit all those must-have criteria. These will be other criteria that we try and build into the design as we can. And so you'll see on here, outdoor spaces is a highly wanted. So outdoor spaces for adults and children to either work or play outside is going to be something that we would like to have included in this library. A higher level of sustainability is included in this as well, so either LEED Silver or a similar certification. And then building some of the spaces around people with specific needs, so hearing loops included in the large meeting room, a sensory area for patrons with specific needs, that's also built into these highly wanted to make it accessible for as many people as possible. And then the nice to have is just another higher standard off of that, to have solar outdoor charging areas, have a higher level of sustainability even than the highly wanted, and then build in more of technology to the rooms to be able to serve more patrons there. So I'll now go into the site selection criteria. This is a similar setup to the project concept. You'll see different categories. And then within each of those categories, you have the must-have, highly wanted, and nice to have. So the must-have will be just the base standard for the site. So any site that meets all of the minimum standards will be considered as a site for the Eastside Public Library. And then the highly wanted and nice to have are more desirable sites, and so they'll get a higher score as you fulfill those categories. So for example, if a site had all the nice to haves, it would get a perfect score and be in contention for this, to be the site for the Eastside Library. And so these are broken up into two categories. The community values is the first one. This is, as our architect likes to say, kind of the soft skills of the site. So the different community things that they see as important to connect this library to the east side and make it a facility that's accessible to everyone. And a lot of these are centered around access. I won't read through all of them, but general walkability, proximity to schools, proximity to bus routes, that's all about accessibility to this building, making it able to serve schools in the area and be accessible from different modes of transportation, and also trying to include people from different demographics that maybe wouldn't use the library in normal. That's built into this in the demographic opportunity alignment. And then sustainability is also built into this as well, having a site that gives you the opportunity to meet a higher level of sustainability. And so that'll be weighed against some of the different LEED categories. And then there's obviously an airport on the east side, so it has to be clear of the FAA regulated zones, and ideally would be far enough away to where we don't have to build in more soundproofing to the building that will drive the cost. And then a site that's visible, the minimum criteria would be a site with signage on the street that you can see, and then it would be great if it could be easily identifiable from a major street where people can see it and access it easily. The next categories are the technical values. These are more of the technical design characteristics that we'll be looking for in the site that the design team, based on their experience designing libraries, has weighed in on to give us a good idea of what different things the site needs to look like to make it a viable site for the Eastside Public Library. The first one is site location, and there's a map a couple of slides later than this that I will run through with that. And then the others, developable square feet. So this is the minimum area that the site would need to be to build the library and associated parking and stormwater. I mean, you'll see that at three and a half acres is that must-have criteria, and then it goes up from there to provide a builder, bigger building footprint and area for expansion. And then all these other ones really play into driving the cost. So topography, we're looking for, the must-have would be the site that can be developed and have a footprint big enough for this building. And then we're looking for a flatter site where you don't have to be, the highly wanted and nice to have would be a flatter site that where you don't have to build, build big retaining walls that will drive the cost up. And the same with utility access. The must-have would be that it can be connected to utilities, but the highly wanted and nice to have would be that that's an easy connection and doesn't drive up cost by having to connect to utilities that are far away from the site. Future building expansion, as I mentioned earlier, is built into this. Not being able to build that full 25,000 square foot facility will need to accommodate area around the building for potential future expansion. Property ownership is another important one. So the must-have is obviously a site that will be able for purchase in Athens-Clark County. And a nice to have would be one that's presently owned by Athens-Clark County, where we can save a little bit of money on the site selection side and put that towards the project costs and especially construction cost. And then those other two, outdoor spaces and county-owned services, are about proximity as well to those county-owned services and outdoor spaces. So this was the map I referenced earlier. This was developed with the site selection committee and user group. And so really, the question that we brought before both the user group and site selection committee is, so this is the Eastside Library. What do you guys envision as the east side? So for the must-have criteria, if we were to set the broadest area that this library could fall into and still meet that east side label, where would you put that boundary? And so there was a lot of discussion between the group about whether that's inside the loop, outside the loop, follows along the river, where that northern boundary exactly is. And this is the map that we developed with them. And so you'll see the eastern and southern boundaries are really just the county line there on the east side. And then that western, northwestern boundary follows the loop and then the Firefly Trail. And then it loops a little bit outside of Winterville there because there's an existing library in that city. And so we wanted to stay away from that and not build this east side library right next to it and take away from their usership. So that's what drove that must-have area. And then if you see that blue dashed line, that defines the highly wanted area. This really focuses around the population-dense areas in the east side. So our design team did a lot of demographic studies, looking at where the populations are on the east side and what those populations look like. And we feel that this captures a lot of those heavy dense areas and will make it really accessible for all the people on the east side and kind of around those major hubs. And then the nice to have goes one step further, and you'll see those green circles are a half-mile walking radius. And we really just tried to pinpoint those major intersections, major places where the site could go that, in an ideal world, we could pick a site within one of these circles, and that would be the nice-to-have area for that site to land. So those, it's a quick run-through of the site selection criteria. In summary, as I've said, the project concept will serve as the basis of design going forward as the design team takes this project concept, turns it into schematic design, and then plans from there. And then the site selection criteria will take these criteria and get a bunch of potential sites and weigh them against these east, or these site criteria for the Eastside Public Library to help determine a list of potential sites that we'll bring to you at a later date. So the next steps with this will be public engagement. So right after this presentation, or the day or two after, we will post the presentation and all the materials to the Athens-Clark County website, the SPOS website, and give an opportunity, and post a survey as well, give an opportunity for the public to give feedback on these criteria, as well as the general program for the building, to get the public's input on what they would like to see this Eastside Library look like. And we'll have three larger public engagement sessions for people to come in and give feedback. They'll be pretty informal, drop-in, drop-out sessions on October 1st from 10 to 12 at Fire Station Number 7, and then two on October 3rd, one during the morning at Living Hope Church on the east side, and then one in the afternoon from 5 to 7 at the East Athens Development Corporation. So we tried to spread these out, have one on a weekend, have a couple during the week to give as many people opportunities to come and give feedback on the site selection criteria, the project concept, and just the general program of the building. And once we've gotten that public engagement, we will take that feedback and any feedback we get from the mayor and commission and wrap that into an agenda report with the revised project concept and site selection criteria based on that feedback, and then bring that before the mayor and commission for approval on November 1st, 2022. And once we have that approval, that'll just kick off the next stage of this site selection criteria, or the site selection process to narrow it down to some potential sites, and we'll be back to present that to you all. And that was all I had, and I'll open up for questions.
Thanks, John. And obviously, there's a lot of evolution, as with any SPOS project, in this one, both in terms of the component pieces, as you saw on the list, as well as in terms of location and the public's weighing in on all of these. But just from where we are at this point, are there any of these that anybody had questions about, or could staff kind of better describe what the path ahead looks like? So I'll start with Melissa, and then go to Carol and Jesse.
Yeah. So my sister-in-law is a librarian in Tallahassee, and the library she works in is a library that used to be a grocery store. The county bought a strip mall, and they put a library there. I think there's like a tag office or something, and then there are a couple storefronts they lease out to small developing businesses. I'm wondering if that is in the possible cards to purchase an existing building and adaptively reuse it. I know you could jack up your lead points that way, and you have all your infrastructure already set. I'm wondering if that's a possibility.
No, that's a great, great point, and that's something that was included in the original SPOS proposal and that we've talked about with the user group. I think maybe we could build it in a little bit more into these site selection criteria in order to make sure we're not ruling out any sites, at least, that could be redeveloped.
Yeah. I mean, I didn't really see that in the presentation, so I just want to make sure that that is a possibility.
Yep. We will definitely take that into account.
Thank you.
Carol?
Yeah, a couple of things. One on the, the public input back there. I had brought this up in our site selection committee, and I, and I do want to publicly thank the members of that committee who are working with me on this, Harry Simpson, Nisa Ritter, Leslie Gonzalez, and Laura Carter. And we're only the site selection committee. There's also the user committee as well. But we had talked about getting some youth involved in the public input, and I really, would really love if we could especially, I mean, this is the first stage, there'll be other public input, but if we could get something with, either at the high school or the high school and the middle school, and, you know, I am more than happy to work with you to facilitate that on the east side. So that's one thing I would like to follow up on. Two is, I'm wondering if we have, are going to be working, or you all will be presenting and questioning upfront with the Citizen Advisory Board for the 100% clean and renewable and the SPOS funds there to see what the options are for energy, green energy, energy efficiency contribution from that fund and to work with that office. And then finally, I just want to clarify, because this is in November, is we're going to be voting on the project concept and site selection criteria. I know this, I have this in my notes somewhere else, but when do we expect to be getting to the final selection?
The final selection of the site is expected in next year or so, around the fall of next year.
A whole year later?
That's right.
Okay.
Jesse?
Thank you.
Yeah, I just had a question about operational costs, both like what we're estimating those to be once this is built, so we can kind of have that in mind, but then also if there's a variability in the size and scope of the facility, is there also a variability in the expected operational costs year to year after it's built?
I don't, we haven't done much looking into the operational costs. I don't know if Keith, you have any input there?
I don't.
Yep. As we go through the process and really nail down the size of the facility, I think we can look more in-depth into those operational costs and get back to you on that.
Jesse, are you thinking about not just the kind of operation of the shell, but staffing as well?
Yes.
Maybe that's something we could work with.
Library.
Okay.
It is listed on the webpage when they submitted the project, but I just don't have the memory.
Russell?
How does the proposed selection criteria take into account existing population? Because it seems to me we'd want to put a library as close as possible to the greatest number of residents.
Right. And the design team did a good bit of looking at the demographics, so they took the census data for the east side of Athens and highlighted kind of the high-density areas on the east side. And that's what really informed that highly wanted boundary there. And that centers around the majority of the population, where a lot of those multifamily units are in the high-density areas.
Tim?
Yeah, thank you. And it's a couple of, I guess my first question is, on this, you know, now very limited construction budget that we're looking at, smaller than what was, how much is that going to potentially steer the site selection?
I think the, the main way that it'll steer the site selection is just building in any future expansion that might be needed in the future, and that's built into the site selection criteria now. There still needs to be discussions with the design team, user group, about what that exactly looks like and what's built into the facility now, what might be built in future. So I think that is later to come, but it will definitely be built into the site selection criteria for future expansion, whatever that looks like once we've nailed down.
Okay. I guess follow-up on that, I mean, just definitely seeing the, you know, the considerably smaller size than what was hoped for, which I'd love us to be able to get as large as we possibly can here. What, do we have any expectation what the savings would be? I see that there's the, what was it, $2.7 million for project contingency and land acquisition. How much of that would be potentially saved if we were to build this on publicly-owned, ACC-owned land already?
So we have around $600,000 within that project contingency and land acquisition for land acquisition. So that would potentially be saved by going to an Athens-Clark County-owned facility. And also, if that process is sped up any, and we build it earlier than '24, obviously that escalation price will come down as well.
Right, right. And I guess my last question, on the same lines is, and I know this gets us, but I wondered, you know, we have $2 million to decide for, for the books and resources, and just thinking about if there was a way that we could try to identify other funding sources moving ahead in the future for the books and resources, that we could put more of that money towards the actual construction of the building, to have a larger building for said books and resources. Is that something that's been discussed at all, or?
That is something that we've discussed with Valerie about if there's a potential to shift that funding around, but we have not discussed outside sources that that could come from.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Jesse?
Yeah, I just wanted to follow up on the operational costs. So the website lists 753,000 as the annual estimated operating. So the website lists 753,000 as the annual estimated operating impact. I guess where I was kind of going for what I'm perceiving as differences since that's passed, one is that the library wages and the wage floor, which was a huge discussion we had in the last budget cycle, happened after the SPOLOST project was passed. I'm curious if that would raise the overall estimated cost. The other is if there's just a variability, you know, we talk about levels of lead certification, and so usually there's a cost savings on energy, especially for a large facility. So do we see significant savings in operational costs if we have that higher level of lead certification on the build-out upfront? And then the third is just, if we're talking about having to reduce the square footage of the building, does that reduce the overall operational cost, because there's just fewer people working in it or less to maintain?
Yeah, those are all great questions, and as we go along, we'll get updates to those and update you on them.
Because I guess in my mind, where this leads is us kind of choosing between two places, and one has lower or higher cost upfront, but the, you know, factoring in the operational costs year to year after is an important thing for us to have in mind when we make that decision.
All right. Thanks, John. Appreciate it.
Kill if I might, just Commissioner Hul's point.
I would think that the site itself would be somewhat agnostic from operating expenses, because that would be mitigated through the site plan, and, but I understand the concern about, you know, what's the first cost and the ongoing cost going forward, so.
Well, and also, if we're going to spend an extra million upfront to have a higher level of lead certification, but that's going to pay for itself in eight years, then we should do that, would be my thinking if we can find a way.
Thank you.
All right, more work ahead. All right, we're moving on to the food bank. Aaron, you going to present?
Yes.
All right, we've got Aaron Barker, Executive Director of Northeast Georgia Food Bank, who is going to talk a little bit about plans as they evolve for that project that we know we've been involved in as one of the conduits for the property acquisition and construction.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you, Mayor and Commission, for this opportunity to present. I promise we will respect your time this evening. Our agenda for tonight is very simple. We want to thank you for this collaborative effort. We would love to update you on our progress to date, and also share more information about the funding stack and how we plan to bring this project to fruition. I think that you are all very familiar with why the food bank exists, but to kick us off with really centering on why this matters, and really the reason that we're here tonight, is to start just by expressing gratitude for the public service that you all have endeavored to invest in this community, especially through the pandemic. That does not go unnoticed. One of the things that I find most impressive about the mayor and commission is I have observed you all meeting some evenings for, I don't know, five or six hours on a Tuesday, and you don't have a meal while you're eating. So anyone that works with me knows that I like to eat on time, I don't really skip meals. But there's something that is true in our reality that allows us to power through these long conversations, and that is not a reality that a lot of our neighbors experience. I would suggest that what allows us to power through these long conversations is the fact that you have certainty of your next meal. It is a fact that of our beloved residents and neighbors in Clark County, about 15% of them do not have that certainty, which is the definition of food insecurity. In fact, about 19,000 of our neighbors in Athens-Clark County do not have certainty of their next meal, and that includes 4,000, more than 4,000 children in our community. And we exist very simply to address that. Our vision is that we will experience a community, and we will wake up one day where we have confidence that every neighbor, every person that we meet across our path has certainty of their next meal, and we accomplish this by providing access to food and relevant education across a 14-county region. This is our service footprint. We have hubs in Athens-Clark County, of course, on Newton Bridge Road, and then our second hub is in Clayton, in the northern part of our region. Moving on, this lets you know kind of overall how many pounds the Food Bank of Northeast Georgia distributes across our 14-county region, and then you will see the relative number of pounds distributed in each of the 14 counties is what was really our guidepost or our compass in determining our requests for ARPA dollars. So as you know, we have submitted a request to Athens-Clark County Unified Government for $350,000. We wanted you to see big picture. That request is relative to the amount of work and the literal number of meals that we're mobilizing in this community. We have active requests with Clark County, and we'll be making requests to the other 12 counties in the very near future. Thank you. So in the last 30 years, which is how long the Food Bank has been around, we have grown in dramatic ways. In our first year, we moved 350,000 pounds of food. Last year, we mobilized more than 3 million pounds, and so that multiplied the pounds and meals by 32. So that's the 30 years of impact. But even still today, as I stand before you, more than 1 million of our neighbors in Georgia continue to face food insecurity, 14.4% across the state of children, 9% of seniors. Just in case you're interested in how food insecurity breaks down by county, this slide reveals the rate of food insecurity, as well as the estimated number of food insecure individuals and children. And then to really move in into the update, and to get in a bit more granularity around this project, space matters in food banking because humans matter. Personally, I'm not a historic fan of big capital projects. I love to get a lot done on a low budget. But in the unique world of food banking, space and square footage translates directly into more pounds and more meals. And it is actually more space that will catapult us forward as an organization and help us to realize our vision of ending food insecurity. Specifically, on the next slide, you'll see that the change in facility across the street is one change that will allow us to move from our current ability to mobilize 12 million pounds of food to adding 5 million pounds, and we believe that that is the number, based on, you know, all of the data and everything we understand about food insecurity, that that will actually get us to a point where food insecurity would be what we would consider functional zero, meaning anyone that needs access to food has it available to them. Jacob Lambek has joined me, our Director of Strategy and Impact. He's going to share a little bit more detail about the facility plan.
Dig into the nice, fun numbers here. Looking at these proposed facilities, square feet breakdown here, these are net square feet, so this is interior from the wall, not trying to inflate the numbers any at all here. Total facility size, the new facility would be approximately 65% larger than our current facility, effectively doubling our volunteer capacity, greatly increasing our dry food storage, and then a huge focus for us is also increasing that fresh food storage. That's refrigerated and frozen space, seeing nearly an 85% increase. Those are fresh fruits and vegetables, proteins, meats, dairy. Those are all products that are highly desirable and highly nutritious as well. Looking here at the parcel that the Food Bank of Northeast Georgia acquired in late August to support this project, this parcel is 37 acres located at 890 Newton Bridge Road. It is directly across the street from our current facility. Our current facility sits on approximately 5.2 acres, so for a bit of a scale of comparison there. Our current facility, we are entirely landlocked. We've had, made at least three improvements to our current facility. There is nowhere else for us to expand. We are bordered in on all sides. So this new property also gives us the opportunity, not only for expansion, but for future expansion and growth as well. Digging in a little bit more here to the actual site plan itself, and then zooming in a little bit more to the actual facility, you see here ample parking, approximately 149 parking spaces. A serious point of friction for us right now is our current facility only has 35 parking spaces through which we accommodate volunteers and staff every day, as well as have trucks move in and out right through that parking lot. So we would also eliminate that by creating their separate truck parking. Looking at total project cost here, a big underpinner of this project are approximately $8.89 million in CDBGCV funds that have been awarded by the Georgia Department of Community Affairs. There will also be significant fundraising, in-kind gifts, and then listed there is the Food Bank Local Match. That would be the minimum that's required by the Food Bank of Northeast Georgia to match those CDBGCV dollars.
And this doesn't include, but also part of that funding stack is the sale of our current facility. That is part of our plan.
And so moving in a little bit more into the numbers, you see that project cost, and I do want to underpin that this is only a snapshot in time. Since we actually created and submitted these slides, the project, total project cost has already actually reduced by $2 million to a total of more in the realm of $17 to $18 million due to a estimation miscommunication. So you see there the land acquisition, which has been completed, the property was acquired for approximately $585,000 plus closing costs, site preparation, building cost, which is where that would be, instead of 14.5, that would now be 12.5. FFNE, we believe we can acquire for a million or less in administrative costs.
And this is without complete VE, so we plan to meet next week to complete the value engineering process, and we expect this cost to reduce further. But tonight, this was the most accurate estimate we had, and we wanted to give you the estimate erring on the side of conservatism and caution versus underestimating that.
So, and to break that down further, just outlining some funding that we've received or has been committed, we have received, of course, the $8.9 million of CDBGCV funds. We have also, in individual corporate and board donations, received approximately $650,000. And then that slice of the committed funds there is an $800,000 grant that we have been awarded by the Wooddrift Foundation. Outlining some other prospective project supporters, foundations, of course, individuals and corporations, local governments, not only county governments, but also city governments, so in Athens-Clark County's case, of course, running the same there. 100% board leader commitment, our board has set a very aggressive give-get goal of $500,000, and 100% Food Bank staff commitment. 100% of the Food Bank staff have already contributed to this capital campaign. So just a kind of a basic outline of next steps here. As soon as possible, we plan to update the project's scope and budget incorporating that VE process, which will happen next week, and finalize our MOU. In October, we plan to communicate the updated project's scope and budget with the DCA. We do have to keep the DCA aware of major changes to that scope and budget. In November, we hope to start the bidding process and begin the DCA fund reimbursement and drawdown process, drawing down from those $9 million in funds. In December, we hope to select a contractor, and by January, we hope to begin construction.
So as we close and open for your questions, I just want to note that clearly we would not be here. The reason we were able to work with the CDBGCV funding is because of the willingness of the mayor and commission, and especially Athens-Clark County Unified Government staff. So I just want to thank and commend Manager Williams, Assistant Manager Jones, Attorney Drake, who have been collaborative, they've invested a lot of resources. This is a highly complex project. This is the first time that funding like this has existed, and so there's just a very steep learning curve. And so we've entered into that together, and I just want to publicly thank you for your faith in us for this opportunity, and I wanted to appreciate and commend staff for their role in this so far. To close out and open for your questions, food is universal. I mean, I think many of us have traveled and lived in many places, and one thing that can get people, you know, with a gleam in their eye and talking faster than anything else, is to start talking about your favorite food or memorable meals. Food is so easy to talk about, and it's such a conversation starter and relationship builder because it is universal, it is essential. And we believe that food is not a bargaining tool. What is essential cannot be negotiable. We want to end food insecurity in our region, and we appreciate your role in that. Happy to take questions.
Some questions, I think Manager Williams had a note.
Well, I just want to clarify, just because you made the mention that part of the plans to add to the capital stack is the sale of the existing facility. I know early on, this was talked about as a potential expansion because of close proximity, but just to clarify for everyone, so your plan is that you will build the 65,000 square feet, but abandon the 38,000 square feet that's existing and sell that?
Correct.
Okay.
And just, I guess, connected to that, do you have an approximate sale value of that parcel?
The appraisal is at 2.2 million.
Okay. Start with Mike.
Sure. I just have a few questions. Appreciate the presentation.
Yes, Commissioner.
In looking at, you know, just considering the previous presentation where we're having to scale back what we're doing on our project, plus numerous other projects that are coming before us in the next few months, I'm just wondering, with your current facility at 38, almost 38 million square feet, you know, why sell that building? Why not just keep that building and build another building across the street for the fresh food storage? It looks like you can, it looks like you can meet your requirements with the current facility.
That is, yeah, that's a great question. We have considered that possibility. When we look at the actual operational realities of food banking, it is, it is pretty essential in order for our operations to be optimized, that we are able to co-locate where the food is stored and moved with our volunteer center, with our shopping floor, with where agencies come. So just for the sake of how the business operates, but it, you know, if that is something we had to do, we would consider it.
Sure.
But given the appraised value of the property, it actually kind of made sense for us to plan to sell and invest, but that's a great question.
No, I get that, but I just also get, too, this gone from a couple of weeks ago, I looked at the number, it was $12 million, now it's up to $20 million. So on the agenda report, we approved a couple of weeks ago.
That's right.
I do have a question about your footprint per county. I'd be curious to know how many of these other counties over the past two years now, I guess, have given, have given dollars to match their pounds of, percentage of pounds distributed? You don't have to answer me now, but just for a future question.
Commissioner, are you referring specifically to local governments and municipalities, or the community generally?
Local, local governments. It seems like you're asking us for 350. I'd be curious as to what these other counties have given over the last two years.
Yeah, and to be fair, this is our first request of this kind to all of the counties. So none of the counties in our footprint have supported us in this way.
We haven't given CDBG money to the food bank before?
Well.
I don't think through our regular rounds, I'd have to look, Commissioner.
Okay. I don't recall one.
It's a great point, and I can tell you, at the top of our priority list is creating, you know, the same connections, and frankly, you know, hope that the support that we, you know, appreciate and experience in Clark and Raven Counties is also occurring in other counties, where the support from the community is very strong. So a lot of what allows us to operate and strength is a lot of strong support from those other counties through corporations and other individuals. So the big-picture answer is our philanthropy and how people invest in the food bank is pretty widely distributed across the 14 counties.
Right, okay, thank you.
Yeah, good question.
Just one more question, too, and just to comment, I guess I'm just looking at, you know, what we have before us, and, you know, eventually these dollars are all going to be run out, and people are asking for them, but I'd be, you know, I'd be curious to see what a smaller building would cost you to help meet some of these, some of these expenses and. building would cost you to help meet some of these expenses and maybe even keeping the whole building and whatnot. I get all the operational stuff, but I do have a question about this. You know, speaking of other projects, I know the mayor sent us a whole list of folks that are asking for dollars for whatever project they're working on. Are we also going to give them the same opportunity, Manager Williams, to present to us at a work session for that, just to be fair?
Sure. No, I think that's a good point, Commissioner. One of the reasons here, I didn't intend for this to be an ask for money. This was an update on a project that we're heavily invested in through a grant that we're accountable to. I do think we need to find a way, to your point, to be fair and organize some of the thoughts that are out there, but also to be fair, we've not done a solicitation of interest or need.
Right.
Which is what we always thought we would get to with the ARPA funds, ultimately once you decided where you wanted to spend those dollars. So you bring up great points, Commissioner Handy. This was really meant to kind of update you on where we were with the progress of the building and the grant, and as you have asked, there are some, there are questions that we need to get answered to.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Oh, thank you. And to clarify, this wasn't intended as a formal ask. We were, you know, it was suggested to us that we provide the context for, you know, this is part of the funding stack and how we're working with other municipalities. So that was the purpose in sharing that slide.
And if you could keep us posted on how the other municipalities respond, I'd be very interested.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Melissa?
Yeah, I mean, my concern is about the participation of other municipalities as well, and I just was wondering if the ask or the contribution from them would be proportional to their need or more proportional to the overall need. I noticed that some of our wealthier counties, our counties with the least need, also probably have a greater ability to contribute. So I just want to like put that out there.
No, that's a great point.
In the request and the ask, consider need versus ability.
We are, yes, we are leaving no stone unturned, so I think that's a really astute observation. Thank you.
Tim? Thank you, yeah, thank you for this presentation. I mean, I will say that I think that, I understand this is not official ask, but just seeing what the Athens Eats program showed this community is capable of, of getting as close as we can to ensuring that every single resident who is needing food is able to get food, I think is pretty amazing, and I want us to be taking the steps to get us towards that capacity year-round, outside of a pandemic also. And I think this is obviously an integral part of getting us to that capacity. So in saying that, I think that, you know, I know we have quite a bit of our ARPA contingency fund still in place, and I think the ask of a $350,000 is still, while we do have to keep track of this because this money is going to disappear, I think is a good use of that contingency, especially, I mean, I was listening to Marketplace just last night, and they were doing a breakdown of the Treasury Report, the beige book from the Treasury Report, and showing that in every single area, including in the Atlanta area which we're in, there was dramatic increase in demand for food banks and food pantries. And I think that's only going to increase for a while as we see until inflation is caught up and we've got this whole rental crisis underway. So I think this is a smart investment for us, and that we should do everything we can to encourage these other municipalities to do what they should. I don't think what they do should dictate what we need to do, so.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Appreciate your work. Thanks, Jake.
Thank you. Here, I'll get this for you.
All right. And as noted earlier, we're going to hear from Planning Department regarding their work plan and the comprehensive plan process, and Bruce Lonnie is here for planning. I'm going to grab some water. Oh, thank you. Doing better than that slide.
Way better than the slide.
I love this.
Oh, yeah. This is graduate classes.
Thank you, sir. What's going to be really interesting is logging in.
Oh, yeah, that's much better than pulling this from the relatable.
Yeah.
I think I told him seven.
I'm good, man, yeah.
So you're going to have all this stuff done by next week, Brad?
Yes, sir.
That's great.
All right.
Just kidding, I wouldn't expect that. It's a lot of work.
It's always dangerous to give a handout before a presentation, isn't it? Right? Thank you for the opportunity tonight for us to talk through a couple of things. We did want to give you, whoops, an update on our progress with the update of the 2018 ACC Comprehensive Plan, the county-wide comprehensive plan. And the second topic we wanted to cover tonight is our departmental work program, which you have in front of you on the 11 by 17. As Manager Williams noted, we finished our 10-year write of the comp plan in 2018, and as part of that process, there's a five-year work program that's baked into your approval of that comp plan, and so that times out in 2023. And so it is normal for communities to go through a process to revisit that five-year work program and to meet the standards that the Department of Community Affairs has for us to keep our qualified local government status in place, to go through and talk about the things that we included in that work program and the content of that plan from five years ago, and make sure that we're on track. So what we wanted to do was take this opportunity, obviously work through the state requirements, but we wanted to recognize that there are things that we've done as a community to achieve our goals on that five-year work program, but there's also some things that we've studied that weren't anticipated in that 2018 plan. We want to make sure to fold those things into this update now. I want to be real clear, we're not rewriting our comprehensive plan. We are refreshing and we are updating the information. We're working through the process with a very capable steering committee. A lot of these folks are planning commissioners, but they wear many hats. We have realtors, we have social service delivery people, folks from education, we have people involved in economic development, but we have neighborhood representatives. We have a position for an ACC Gov Commissioner also that we'd like to fill as part of this process to include in our efforts. But what we're really doing is taking the comprehensive plan, bringing it into today's terms, relating it in a large part to the strategic plan that this body has taken careful work to put together for FY '23 through '25, but not just that document. So the steering committee is looking at all kinds of data, refreshing data, clarifying language. As you may recall, the 2018 plan built off of a very large community process, and the format of it was different. It was not the kind of comprehensive plan that we had done as a community before. So this time, we're bringing it around to a format that is more typical for what we've had in the past, and we put together an 18-month process to get this done. We're relying heavily on pulling together a draft document that looks at plans and studies that have been adopted since 2018, and there's a significant amount of work that has come across all of your desks since that time, things that you've adopted, not the least of which are updates to our future land use map and our zoning map. We also have the benefit now of census 2020 data. The cycle that we're on with our comprehensive plan is kind of unfortunate because we're always right about the time when our census data is at its most blobby. So we use this opportunity to get the more robust data and fold it in and make sure we're on track. We definitely want to use the goals and priorities that have come out of your budgeting processes and community discussions, and we will do that. The steering committee has been an excellent resource for making sure that the document makes sense, and I don't want to understate that. We want to make sure that this comprehensive plan is readable, that it makes sense, that it's on point, but we are not really changing the goals and objectives that we had in 2018. We're refreshing them and bringing them into today's terms. We're using county resources, not just the Planning Department, but we're working across multiple departments to make sure that we're pulling in their data, their expertise, as part of that refresh. So public input is a big deal. Whenever we do a comprehensive planning process, whenever we do any planning process in Athens, we make sure that public input is folded in in meaningful ways and with multiple opportunities. We are at a point, and you'll see the timeline in just a second, we're at a point where public input is going to begin in earnest at the end of this month and the beginning of October through a variety of means. We will have public meetings out in the community, not just simply, in fact, we really don't want to hold any public initial meetings in our auditorium. We would prefer to take them out into the community to strategic locations where we can get to people and where those folks feel comfortable coming out to a meeting to have this discussion. Drop-in sessions, that's a practice that we have regularly where the public can come in at their leisure anytime, eight to five, and speak to a planner and ask their questions and ask for guidance and understanding the narrative behind what's in it if they're interested. Online comment tools will be a part of this as well, making sure that we're giving people opportunity to put thoughtful comments in, and we will carry those forward as part of the process and share them with you. We will have eight total public hearings. That is significantly more than the state requires. They require three. And so here's our schedule. Where we sit right now is about halfway in terms of the calendar, but in many ways, we're about to kick off the most important part where we have the initial draft completed and out of the steering committee, and we start earnestly going out to the public to get them to understand what we're doing and to get, really, education, a little bit of feedback, and I want to tell you what we're going to do with the feedback we get. Because we are refreshing this document and not rewriting it, the feedback that we get about the comprehensive plan, we're going to make part of our five-year work program for the next, for the big tenure update. And as we move our way through this process towards bringing it to this body at first Tuesday in December for a hearing and authorization to submit to the state for review, we're going to continue to gather that input and keep it on hold as we move into something we're going to talk about more of in the second part of this presentation tonight. The state does allow for a 90-day review period, so that's why this is coming to you December 6th, is so that we can get it to the state officials to look at, make sure that we're on the right track, get their feedback back in time to then have another round of public input to keep everybody on track, get it back to the Planning Commission, the Mayor and Commission, and have it to you for May so that we have a little bit of wiggle room if we need to slide a little bit of time, but maybe we won't. Have it to you for a vote in May, and we'll easily make our June 30th deadline to keep our QLG status intact. So how does this relate to our overall work program? It is a key function for us to have a comprehensive plan intact that is relevant and workable and working, and one of the biggest elements within the comprehensive plan is our future land use plan. But those large overarching projects are just a piece of what we do, so we wanted to give you a sense of the work of the department, put some numbers to it. For fiscal year '22, we had over 4,000 touches on plans, things that we reviewed, whether it was zoning permit, a rezone application, a home occupation. All of the items there that you see in those 27 record types are the things that we do on a regular basis. So for that fiscal year, we had 4,143. About half of those fell into two categories. We had over 1,000 items that were construction plans review records, and that's our weekly process to get things built, to put zoning and design practices into action and have construction activity going on around the community. That's the plans review process. But we also have sort of lower-tier projects that get zoning permit review. Those might be the construction of a new single-family home or the construction of a 50% plus addition on a home, a deck, a fence, a driveway, temporary use permits for a vendor during game days. Those are all zoning permits, and we did about 1,000 of those. So about a half of those items, about half of the touches that we had fall into those two categories. What's interesting to note is only about 2.8% of the work that we do by volume is heard by a board or an authority or a commission. So a lot of the work that we're doing is handled administratively. It's not coming out into a meeting format, it's happening right in our office. 1.2% are actually heard by the Mayor and Commission. So the opportunities that we have in front of you for a rezone or a special use or a plan development are a portion of our work, but they are 1.2% of that volume in a given fiscal year.
Why does it feel like we've heard 41,000, 4,100?
It's like dog years.
Yeah, it is.
So overall in our work program, the way that we've allocated our staff time with existing staff resources, this is how it breaks out. And all of those items that fill our time that we're in the 27 record types consume about 97% of our staff capacity. We have about 3% available right now for special projects, and we enjoy the special projects. I want to say that as often as I can. The special projects give us that extra juice. You know, a lot of us went to school for the special projects. Not many of us went to school for fence permits. So as much as we enjoy the interaction with the community and we enjoy helping somebody get something done, and we do, looking at those big-ticket things, thinking at a higher level is really the exciting stuff and where we enjoy having opportunities to perform and serve the community. So in that 3%, as it sits today, we've, whoops, we've arranged it across a spreadsheet that's really hard to read on a screen, so that's why we've handed it out. Breaking this down really quickly, the timeline that you see before you started in February of 2021 and extends out, we have a variety of new projects, and you'll see at the top of that new project list is the five-year update of the comp plan, which we are at the halfway point on. You'll also see listed there some things that were top-tier items from the 2018 comprehensive plan, things that were talked about with the community, looking at our growth concept map, revising it, and letting it be the basis for a new future land use map, something that hasn't been looked at in over 20 years. And it's time. We've changed, and priorities have changed, and growth has come, and we need to accommodate the next 20 years of growth, and that's a foundational tool for making sure we do it well. From that future land use map update, there are a number of things that we'd love to tackle. Zoning code updates, changes in policies and design guidelines for everything from housing to industrial development to parks and open space. And so you see there a list of new projects that, some of those should look pretty familiar to you, I think. And then we have a laundry list of ongoing projects that I won't spend a ton of time on unless you have questions. But when looking at this spreadsheet, that 3% gets eaten up very quickly even with a single project. So right now, that 3% is dedicated to getting the comprehensive plan update completed because it's important. It keeps our qualified local government status intact. But we're about to wrap that up in terms of putting content together and going through the public process, so it's time for us to look at that next project. The next foundational piece of this puzzle that we find to be important is the growth concept map and the future land use map, because it does provide the basis for all kinds of other projects to be well-informed and on the right track for writing policy.
I ask a question, Bruce, that you pointed out, and I'm going to just ask before I forget, and this may be directed to Manager Williams. So how do we, what, I guess I'm wondering what our Planning Department needs to let the planners plan and then to let the fence permitters, I mean, is there somewhere you can put the fence permitters that where people?
Parking lot.
Yeah, well, I'm just saying, you see what I'm saying, if these guys are hired to do planning, let's let them do planning and then hire somebody else to do the, making sure the fence is built right and stuff like that. I don't know the answer, so I'm just asking.
I can respond. The way that we have to approach this, there are certain things in that job description that we have that are ordinance mandated. that we have that are ordinance mandated, that are required by law, and those get the high priority. A fence permit is required by law, so we have to spend time with it. We have to put allocation.
Does it have to be from your department or can it be from somebody else's?
The way it's, the way it is organized, yeah, it comes through our department. Yeah. And that's not a bad thing, and I don't, I don't, I don't want to put that impression out there. When fully staffed, we had about 20% capacity for special projects, and we can move through a lot of content and do a lot of planning work and balance that workload nicely. That's not the case at the moment, but that's, that's all right. There are ways for us to get to the things that I think need to be done, but we don't really have techs, permit techs, that just sort of live in that realm of just doing zoning permits. We all, we all kind of share in that work effort because there's varying levels of complexity and they're required by law.
Well, Bruce, if I could, a couple of things. One is that you did approve, the mayor recommended, an extra position to try and provide some more capacity. Y'all approved that in the latest. And what's very interesting about, I mean, first off, there's just a lot going on in Athens Clark County, a lot of thought of permitting. And Bruce, I'm really struck, and you can correct me, but how, you know, questions that come at y'all with a seemingly innocuous fence permit suddenly get thrown into zoning classifications and, and so, the people that are helping in providing customer service really need more than a basic level of knowledge about our ordinances and code, and that's sort of made it necessary where y'all have given everybody the opportunity to serve time at the counter, as so it's called.
Right.
So, you know, just saying, well, here's a class of workers that will do this and everybody else does everything else. There is some intermingling of content. Is that fair?
Absolutely fair. We try to cross-train. Our, our office structure is fairly flat. We all, we all interact with the community. We all keep it very real and in touch with what it takes for things to be done. But you're absolutely right. A simple fence permit sometimes turns into a discussion about countless other topics, and sometimes they're not even about planning department topics, but they're an opportunity, that's a touch, that's a moment with the community where we can give them service on a variety of things. But yeah, we haven't, we haven't really divided up our workflow to that extent. For example, right now, we all take a four-hour turn at the front counter to do counter permits. That's four hours in a week. It's not bad, and it works fine. And it, it helps us also understand where opportunities for change need to come because we can sometimes see where the code is no longer relevant, or maybe things have changed and we need to look at a text amendment because as we administer these rules, we're finding that we're starting to separate from what the goal was of the rule in the first place.
I've seen that.
So, to wrap up really quickly, our current projects that are taking priority and our big work efforts for our department, we just went live with the new plan review and permitting software Monday of this week. That's exciting and taxing, and so, we are, we are working to become proficient with that and make sure that old habits become, get shelved, the new habits get created and that we are proficient with that technology so that we can serve the community. As noted, we're also working on the update to the comprehensive plan. As a primary work effort, we see that sliding down as we release that document to the state for review, which will open the door for us to slide some of that staff capacity towards a new topic, and that's where we're looking to develop the new growth concept map in the future land use plan. If you have any questions?
I think if there's another takeaway from it that we would say is that future land use map is such a foundational document for everything in terms of future growth, where that growth is appropriate, where it should go, it's kind of like building a house. Everybody wants to design their kitchen. It's missing middle. You know, I mean, there's a lot of things out there that it would be very, very productive over the long term for this community, in our opinion, to base it off of a new updated future land use plan instead of being out trying to figure out where is appropriate for missing middle, and we haven't updated the land use plan yet. So, if there would be an ask from staff, it would be to allow that land use plan work to occur first before we continue to push forward with some of these other projects that we want to work on and they're great for the community, but they're just a little bit ahead of the curve right now without a new land use plan.
And there would be some efficiencies built in if we could get the future land use plan in place.
No, and I appreciate that note really kind of as we kick off the conversation time. You know, I'm very excited about what would be really some most significant changes to our zoning maybe since the 99, 2000 period, having been attuned to this since that point in time. But I'm also, you know, conscious of our resource allocation, kind of the questions that Mike brought up, you know, how do we, how do we get these things done well? And what I don't want to create is an environment where there's sort of a logjam or kind of a mismatch, sort of cart before the horse dynamic, and so, I'm very excited about the prospect of missing middle and some transformative work within our neighborhoods, that single-family work, you know, but I also know, you know, we really haven't looked at high-growth opportunity zones since 99. You know, we haven't introduced a new zoning concept. So, anyhow, I just want to begin the conversation saying I am mostly interested in getting this work done well, and I understand that that requires that foundational piece, you know, that we say, hey, looking at the 130 square miles of this county, how do we do that well? So.
And it includes, I mean, something else that was not real when we did it in 2018 were the TAD districts. I mean, those need to be built into our future land use map and those land uses within those TAD boundaries looked at very closely for future growth.
And we feel like coming out of the comprehensive plan update, this is us keeping a promise. As we go through the public input process, we're going to hear things that people are concerned about. This is a chance for us to go right into that process that will educate the next comprehensive plan. We're just ahead of the curve.
Melissa, to start.
Yeah, I'm kind of on the same page as the mayor with, you know, the need for this foundational planning to be done to get these, these things done that we really need to face. You know, we are facing housing crisis in our community and real pressure on our neighborhoods. But in this comprehensive plan update process, I'm really excited about the opportunity to educate the public about what zoning is. I think a real shortfall we have is that so much of the public doesn't understand zoning, doesn't understand how it works, doesn't understand what's allowed under certain zones. So, I would ask that there be that kind of educational piece built into these sessions, particularly when it comes to that chart that's embedded in the code, that has the list of the zones and what's allowed and what's not allowed, what's permitted, what's, what needs an S U P. If that chart could be presented to the public, I mean, I know, I even have a hard time finding it every time we have a zoning question. So, that basic kind of education, presenting it to, to the public to let them know that these are our zoning categories, this is what's allowed and what's not allowed in each category would be really helpful to let the public at least begin to understand these things.
Fair enough.
Carol?
Yeah, I have two questions. One is real easy. How many positions do you have unfilled now?
Six, including the new position.
And those are, are you getting applicants?
Six out of 19.
And you're not getting applicants?
They're limited.
Okay. Second question, you know, Commissioner Hammy mentioned the construction plans review and such, but if I go back to that plant, the weekly planning staff time, I noticed that 26% of the time is for the appointed board admin. Could you, is that correct, the orange on the right?
Correct. There is a, there's a lot of time given to the smaller percentage of things that go through a public process, through the planning commission, to the mayor and commission. That's also multiple boards. So, that's the Metropolitan Planning Organization, MACORDS. We administered all of the processes with that. Our hearings board, which meets monthly, the History of Preservation Commission, which meets monthly, and there are opportunities where we collaborate with other departments' boards that they staff primarily. So, it is a good bit of time.
Thank you.
Go ahead. Carol, is that?
That's it. That's good. I'm good.
Jesse and Russell.
I have three questions. The first is about like interdepartmental collaboration. I see the list here of interdepartmental projects, but there's other things that seem like other departments would be looped into. And so, I guess I'm just wondering, this might be a question mostly for the manager. Could you kind of help me understand the relationship between planning and then HCD? I'm thinking especially about HCD, TPW, and transit. You know, so much of what we've been driving for has been related to affordable housing, so a lot of what we keep kind of pushing for that I think is stressing the planning department, you know, just how is HCD looped into that? Because a lot of the updates we get on that stuff is sort of about HCD, but clearly work we could do around our future land use and zoning codes would probably help with that. And then, also, maybe to a lesser degree in terms of what I perceive stressing staff, but certainly very relevant to what we've talked about a lot over the past couple of years is the Vision Zero bike pad stuff with TPW and the expansion of transit.
No, those are great questions, Commissioner, and I would say there is a natural affinity between planning and zoning and affordable housing, HCD. You know, up till now, we have facilitated, you know, the construction of affordable homes through our housing partners, through the conveyance of grant funds. I think there's a real opportunity when we talk about the future land use map and to Brad and Bruce's points about this is the time to, you know, when we talk about missing middle, affordable housing, that, you know, so there is totally space for HCD to engage and help lead that discussion along with planning when we get into the future land use map. And then, your second question was Vision Zero, and you know, this is a great opportunity for us to get around the table and put all those concepts for what you're trying to accomplish. And y'all, this is how it happens. 20, 30 years from now, what this community looks like will depend in large part on what you decide on that future land use map. It's the most, I'm sorry, it's the most inexpensive way to direct the growth of the community is through the land use planning, and I don't think a lot of folks really appreciate how fundamental that is.
If you don't mind, Blaine, I mean, just, I mean, a good example is, you know, what, what maybe a lot of people think of as a snapshot of Athens in 1990 versus snapshot of Athens in 2020. And so, you think about the downtown core, and we've seen lots of vertical construction, and that was a specific development community response to, that worked out in 1999 and 2000. So, you know, to Blaine's point, you could chart that out in terms of kind of people's like visceral reaction to the community and, you know, and even things like walkability. And while we might think, okay, well, a lot of that high-density vertical growth was, you know, might have been some student growth, you know, there's kids who are walking across the street to campus, not driving three miles to class.
So, sorry to pause, so like that interdepartmental collaboration, I think it's, I'm thinking especially of HCD here, like where are they built into this process and timeline?
For the future land use?
Yeah. Yeah, and the evolution of the comp plan and things.
And we'll be happy to spell all that out. There's a process we like to follow when we do this where we look internally at all the data that all of our departments have and pull that good technical information together first and then lay out options for growth patterns moving forward. And that's HCD, social service delivery, but it ought to be engineering, environmentally sensitive areas. It's, it's all of that. And we try to paint that picture and then chart a course forward with some options for us to choose from.
Okay. Yeah, I guess maybe this is where I'm going with this is like the bottleneck in question, like staff capacity and not wanting to keep overburdening a stressed-out staff, but we added multiple positions to the budget for HCD in this last budget cycle and the one for planning. And, you know, I guess I'm wondering, like, if we are trying to move expeditiously on some of this affordable housing work at the same time that we're trying to move forward on this, like, are we just dealing with the issue of we'd be fine if these vacancies were filled, but they're not, or do we actually need to be, you know?
Well, I would say that there's two things going on here. One is that we do have the vacancies, which is inhibiting the timeline, being able to accomplish what you as a body have already voted on that you want worked on. So, that's the first issue. Second issue is there's a whole host of new projects as, you know, up here that have committees that are working on it, and they're really broaching some very important topics, but staff's getting left behind because we're still, you know, down people and we're anchored to what you told us to do before. And so, you know, from a staff perspective, we would not want to see policy recommendations coming forward that staff hadn't had the ability to, you know, participate in or help be a part of. So, that's one issue about the accelerated work. And then, the other point brought up by staff as well, maybe there's some other, you know, more comprehensive looks at the countywide before you start layering in some of those value adds, so. Probably could have said that better.
The, the other items on there that are a little more topic-specific would move along much faster if we had the land use policies in place to accommodate the next 20 years. To the mayor's point, the way we had in 1999, there was all kinds of policy progress that was made in the first five years after the adoption of the future land use plan in 99 because we had buy-in from the community on a new direction. We had buy-in from the mayor and commission where you felt like you, you knew what the 20 years was going to be with a future land use goal, and then you could start slotting in the strategies and policies to achieve it. And so, that's what we're lacking right now. We have a dated future land use plan that needs to become relevant for all the things that you want to do.
Can I ask one last question? Yeah, it's just, it's about the steering committee. So, kind of curious, like, how, like, how does that membership get appointed? And I guess what's kind of struck me about the steering committee is it's all planning commission members, and then I guess at some point a commissioner will end up on there, and then there's one realtor on there, but there's nobody who's a specialist in affordable housing on here or like, you know, anything related to the work of HCD. So, I guess I'm just kind of wondering, you know, how does this committee get set up? Is there room to maybe bring other voices to the table that could lend some of this expertise to the discussion?
So, where we haven't had that expertise represented, we've brought people in. And so, the steering committee has met with economic development staff, the steering committee has met with HCD staff. And again, we're not, we're not charting new courses with the comp plan, we're refreshing the data. So, a lot of those goals and objectives that were in there are going to remain there from 2018, and what we're doing is noting the things that we finished and then adding in to the next five-year work program, anything that's already been adopted and come through a process where HCD staff or other departments might have, will have weighed in. So, we're, we're not trying to till up new earth with this process. We're trying to comprehensively pull together data and approvals on other projects into one document and paint the next five-year work program for the state off of things that we've been doing for the last five years. We've got a lot, so we're in good shape. Staff collaboration happens all the time on those types of things. Where we would like to till some new earth is with the future land use map, and we would definitely work with all the departments. HCD for sure.
Is the steering committee appointed by the planning director or by the mayor? Or like, how did, how did these people get selected? I guess I'm just curious.
It was collaborative. In the past, the planning commission has served as the steering committee with the comprehensive plan updates. DCA has adopted new standards for the composition of a steering committee to also include an elected official and an economic development resource person. And so, the, the two positions at the bottom of this list are representing those other requirements from DCA, but this is the practice we've followed in the past, using the planning commission as the body to do the update of the, of the comprehensive plan.
So, maybe, maybe the better, like, who, I guess I'm just trying to wrap my head around like this, DCA didn't appoint this committee, right?
No.
DCA didn't select which planning commissioners serve or which person, which person fills that new need from DCA, right? So, who picked these people?
I mean, they were honestly pulled together, just volunteers from the planning commission, trying to keep it to five members in the planning commission so that we didn't have a quorum, just procedurally, and then that was communicated.
Yeah, and it was for us, with the turnover we had with the planning commission, it also represented a real good opportunity for some of the newer planning commission members that were not seated during the 18 major update to dig into it. And so, they come out of it on this role as a steering committee, which is really just, as Bruce described, a review five years after adoption, an opportunity to really learn it and get a feeling that it's much more than just a future land use map, although that's very important. So, we, in part, it was set up by a directive from the state, and then in part, it was a decision that I made in terms of a group of planning commissioners.
If we were doing new content, we would have a different composition. Yeah, I think maybe that answers your question.
I've got the African Russell, and I'll circle back to other things.
Let me answer my question. I was wondering, like, when we submit this to DCA and the NEGRC, how do you feel? But you answered that already.
Russell.
How does the future land use map interact with the current zoning map?
In Athens, it interacts in a really great way. We're the only community in Georgia that requires the future land We're the only community in Georgia that requires the future land use map to be considered with every zoning action, which is a wonderful legislative connection that we have locally here. So there's that answer to your question. The broader brush is, if we go through a larger process to update the future land use map, it really begs for revisiting the zoning map to introduce new zones, or rephrase or update zoning categories to actually implement the vision that we've just put down for the next 20 years. That's a more sensible.
So the future land use is sort of a non-binding guide?
Right.
That informs what a zoning change might be?
Correct.
What an optimal zoning change might be?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. But you, but there's no talk about updating the zoning map at this time. You want to do the future land use first, then, okay. Yep. Thanks.
Melissa and Carol.
Yeah, I'm coming back to the steering committee, considering that, you know, the biggest challenge we have right now is an affordable housing crisis. You know, we're among the top in the nation with housing disparity. So I mean, I feel like it would be logical to have someone representing an affordable housing partner on that committee. I mean, these are folks who tend to have some kind of broad knowledge of the ins and outs of zoning in the first place and the broader needs in our community. So I would just put that out there.
It sounds like it's prescribed by DCA, that it's planning commissioners with the sort of two addendums at the bottom.
Yes. And the other thing I could have listed in the various resources that we're using to develop the current draft, the GIC study is one of those resources. So we are absolutely baking in all of the housing research that we've been working on over the past five years into the next five-year work program. If we were introducing new programs as part of this comprehensive plan, we would be bringing those people in to help inform those new programs or those new priorities. We're really not doing that. We're just refreshing with things that have already been adopted over the past five years, putting that into the work program and giving it to the state. So we will have housing items, we have housing items in there now. We just, they won't be new things, they will be things that are already in process. Because what we want to do is get started on those other documents for the next big 10-year update.
Carol.
I just want to get the big picture here, what you wanted to communicate to us, and that is, one, you guys have a lot of work, you don't have enough staff right now because of hiring. But two, that your preference is, you're working on this, if we're looking at that spreadsheet, I'm looking here, that you're like, if we really want to work on one and then two, then three, before we work on 10, 11, 12, and 13. Is that part of yours?
Correct.
Now, how far does it go before you, like, we have to finish one, two, or your preference, one, two, three, and four, or five and six? I mean, are those all in order? Or is there?
I'd be lying if I wouldn't say there is a sequence here that, from a staff standpoint, we thought would flow. Priorities have obviously shifted on some of these items since this was first put together, so that, that sequencing is not necessarily one to two to three to four. But the first three items, I would say, are in the correct sequence.
Yeah, because wouldn't the form-based code element, what I'm picking up, which I don't really quite understand, wouldn't that influence the zoning map as well?
Yes.
Okay.
The first three are the most important.
Okay. Then, just on my spreadsheet, there's three items that have little stars on them. What are those for?
That, they are the answers to your question. So those are three items that, from a staff standpoint, could probably be worked on contemporaneously with working on the future land use map.
Oh.
As long as we didn't have geographic decisions being made about accessory dwelling units or other program notes, policies on, I think we had ADUs, we had minimum residential floor area, and short-term rental.
Okay, so the minimum residential floor would get into our tiny houses.
Correct.
Right, okay.
Correct. But those wouldn't necessarily generate a change in the future land use map as a cause and effect.
Right.
We'd want the future land use map to accommodate what came out of those processes, so we wouldn't go too far. But having some things that you have worked on or asked to be worked on during this time period may be all right, and maybe compatible. But we wouldn't be able to commit a lot of staff time to that, because we'd be working on the future land use map.
Got it. Thank you.
Tim.
And, yeah, thanks for this, Bruce. And so on the comprehensive plan five-year update, so this has been, so we're about at the halfway point then, roughly according to this?
With the update?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, so I guess, I guess I would ask the mayor to get a commissioner appointed, I guess, pretty quickly to it, so that we can get that, the commissioner can be, because there's definitely, I understand, like, the, saying like, economic development person on there, I get that. I, I do understand what Commissioner Link's bringing up, that with possibly some, somebody's looking at this for, maybe through a unique, well, that's a unique economic development lens, a unique housing need lens, that maybe, we assume the planning department, the planning commissioners have that, but it still might be worth a specialty. So I guess on that, I guess I would ask, I understand that we created that committee with the DCA requirements, but I guess I wonder if they're, if they say that we can't add an additional person on there? It'd be interesting.
There's no prohibition.
Yeah, so, I mean, I think that could be an interesting element, especially since that is such a huge issue that we're dealing with right now. And then, I was going to say another thing, but I completely forgot. So, but yeah, appreciate it. Thank you.
Jesse.
Yeah, I just, you know, nothing against the person who's been appointed, but I think, you know, that particular Realtor has a specific set of interests and ways of going about things, that it does not necessarily comprehensively capture a lot of what's happening in the community. And so, you know, piggybacking on, like, if there's a way to have another voice at the table in this committee, I think that would be very, very helpful. Because, you know, I hear you that this is not a, this is more a refresh, right, rather than new stuff, but also, we're talking about trying to bake in some of the new stuff that's been kind of bogging down into this, and, you know, really figuring out how to do that best. I just, somebody who wakes up every day thinking about the affordable housing crisis has a very different, like, base set of things that they think need to be addressed in a future land use plan than someone who wakes up every day thinking about how to maximize their profit on sales. So.
Well, so I'd like to offer that, you know, periodically, we have y'all approve the work program, and we will be bringing forward an agenda item to, you know, ensconce what's been discussed tonight, what the recommendations are. And, and there is not one item on here that is not worthy of work, it's just the ordering of it, and doing it where staff can be, you know, involved and helpful as policy recommendations are being formulated by committees and furthered through the Planning Commission, the Mayor and Commission. So Brad, if we can, you know, have the work program reflect what we've discussed this evening as far as order and timing, and then we'll bring it to the commission for their approval. You know, of course, you know, if you have different ideas about what the priorities are, please let us know, but there, there just can't be adds, we're going to have to swap some things out. And as Bruce and Brad said, the first three are really non-negotiable, because we're in a DCA timeline, and these are fundamental to our planning and zoning processes.
Look for an upcoming agenda item.
All right, so we have a couple of items to discuss in executive session, give everybody a five-minute break. I think Commissioner Hamby's here. Oh, no, no, Commissioner Wright's right behind you.
Sorry. Sorry. I hate to hear that. You gotta get some skills.
Yes, sir. Oops.[1244.15]